I want to call to order the Amberly Council meeting of May 9, 2016. Please call to roll.
Rich Bardak, Paige Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattenbach, Alita Kamine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolfe.
Here.
Scott Larmour.
Here.
Kevin Frank.
Here.
Chief Wallace.
Sorry, Lieutenant Bloom.
Here.
Rick Kay.
Now if everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our April meeting. These minutes were circulated earlier and there was a suggested change from the Vice Mayor and two suggested changes from Councilman Warren. Are there any other suggested changes, violations, or additions? If not, we can consider the minutes approved with those three additions. Next, we were going to recognize Wayne Signer tonight. And maybe if Wayne comes later, we'll recognize him. Wayne is retiring from the Stormwater Advisory Board. And Wayne has served on the Stormwater Advisory Board for more than 13 years since the Stormwater Advisory Board started. And I think has really been very instrumental in getting that board up and running and starting from a very difficult point. So it's very appropriate that we recognize Wayne. But if he comes in later, we'll recognize him then. If not, we'll do it at a later meeting. Next, we have some citizens to... Oh, I'm sorry. I was so anxious. We will move back to the Finance Report and the Village Manager will present the Finance Report for Mark.
The UAN report has been included in your council packet. I'd like to add a few comments to the summary that you've been provided as well. We typically look at the General Fund and the General Fund revenues. The earnings tax is our most significant source of revenue in the village. And for the month of March, the village collected $242,000. This is up about almost 300 percent from March of 2015's collection of $81,000. As I've explained before in previous discussions about this is that when you do a snapshot of earnings tax, it ebb and flows. There is not typically a rhyme or reason why some things change or whether they go up or whether they go down. At our Finance Committee this past month, when we did do an analysis of the earnings tax, breaking it down from the net profit withholding and the individual, which are the three categories that we have for earnings tax, it would appear as though the village received a large amount of fourth quarter estimate checks in the beginning of January of 2016. So normally, and this is a timing issue, normally that would have fallen into 2015. If you recall, our 2015 collections were down. So I think this is more of a timing issue. And the same thing on the net profits. We did receive some late file returns, received those in January 16. We should have received those earlier. And then the other part of I want to comment in the earnings tax, since it is up significantly this quarter, is that companies are complying with sending their payments in monthly, which was a new requirement of House Bill 5 that went into effect on January 1, which the council adopted as part of our income tax code last year. So just want to mention that about the earnings tax collections. So far this year, we have collected $1.1 million of the 2.6 that we had estimated for this year. So we've already collected 43 percent of the earnings tax. In regards to property tax, the village did not receive any property tax. And for local government fund, which is some of the revenue we received from the state, we received a little over $3,800. So in total, for the General Fund, we received our F estimate for revenues for the year, the $4.4 million. We've taken in $1.3 million, which represents about 30 percent of our General Fund collections so far this year. On the expense side of it, for the month of March, the village spent almost $400,000 out of the General Fund. We have a $4.3 million General Fund budget, and we've spent in total $1 million. So we've spent about 24 percent. So we are right on track in regards to expenses. And that leaves our unencumbered fund balance at $3.8 million. And that's where we have been staying for the most part for the last several months. And that concludes my Finance Report.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we will move on to citizens who speak. First, Jamie Carl.
My name is Jamie Carl, which I'm sure that people have heard a little bit about. I'll start out with just an overview in case you aren't aware. Duke Energy has currently identified three proposed paths of a 30-inch natural gas pipeline. One of the routes, which is the pink line, would run pretty much through the center of Amberly Village. It would run along Ridge as well as Galberath. And then at some point along Galberath, it would divert through residential backyards. It's a little unclear on the map on their website, but I attended their meeting. And from what I could tell from the satellite imagery, it's properties between Spring Valley and Crestdale. As a homeowner whose property could potentially be affected by this pipeline, I received a letter in the mail to notify me of this project. Despite the fact that the project would literally change the landscape of our village, I was told only property owners along the pipeline were notified. I attended the meeting held by Duke in March. I am opposed to the pink line that would run through Amberly for a variety of reasons. I think the pipeline would have a massive devastating environmental impact to Amberly. The construction would require an easement from property owners. I was told this would be a minimum of 15 feet on either side of the 30-inch line. Once the easement is in place, no structures of any kind, such as fences, sheds, or even a driveway post, would be allowed. Additionally, no plantings such as trees would be allowed on this easement. Since the route follows Ridge and Galberath, that would mean the loss of numerous large mature trees that currently line our main roads. Duke did say at the meeting, when I asked them, that they would consider planting some trees to mitigate the tree loss. However, it would take literally decades for those newly planted saplings to reach the size of our current mature trees. Removing the trees, I think, along our roads would have a negative impact on the rural feel that we currently have in our village. I think the other thing that we can't ignore is the safety component. Pipeline ruptures can and do occur. The safety officer actually told me in March that they're so uncommon that he couldn't even think of one that had ruptured. And he said he had worked for Duke for decades. However, on April 29 of this year, there was a pipeline explosion outside of Pittsburgh. The line that exploded was a 30-inch natural gas pipeline. That's the same thing that's being proposed to go through the center of our community. In this incident, which I do have news articles, if anybody is interested, that I printed off that I can give to you, a home that was several hundred yards away from the explosion was destroyed. For my personal property of this line, it would be 100 feet from my front door. And that's me on Galberath. In the properties between Spring Valley and Crestdale, they would be 20 to 50 feet away from their homes. So the line that exploded in Pittsburgh was in a very rural area. We obviously, although not as densely populated as some parts of Cincinnati, are more densely populated than the Pittsburgh area. So I understand. I'm a user of natural gas in my home myself, and I get that natural gas has to be transported somehow. However, I just don't think it should be in a densely populated rural area. And I believe Duke could explore other routes that would place this line in maybe more of a rural area farther away from private homes. I also understand that Amberly Council has no authority over this decision on where Duke is going to place the pipeline. But I do think council has the power to keep the citizens of Amberly informed. I think this pipeline would affect not only property owners directly on the line, but the village as a whole. Thank you for your time. And I do have copies of the article, and I printed off the copies of what the line would look like if anybody is interested in seeing them.
Could I have a copy of the article, please?
And we do have one other resident that will be speaking on this. I didn't know if anybody had any specific questions for Jamie. Okay. Next, Mary Stillpass.
Good evening. Mary Stillpass, 7370 Willa Brook Lane, 45237. I do echo the comments Jamie made, and I just wanted to add that the Environmental Stewardship Committee is starting to follow this discussion. And we have joined together with NOPE, which it stands for Neighbors Opposed to the Pipeline Extension, as it goes from Amberly through Blue Ash. They have been meeting and have alerted us to the work that they've done. And because it's the continuation of the pipeline in Amberly, we thought it was a natural extension to work with them. They're currently evaluating three routes, two of which are the one that goes along the railroad tracks, kind of parallel to Redding Road. So it's at the western edge of Amberly Village. And then the one that Jamie spoke of that runs through the heart of the village. I think that the removal of vegetation, the erection of fences, will be a devastating blow to the village as we know it today due to how we pride ourselves on the greenery and the natural features. The schedule that they've laid out is they're beginning surveying and designing the project this spring. In the summer, they're going to start applying for permits. They're going to complete the design next spring. And next summer, they'll be constructing it. And by fall of 2018, it will be completed. We are going to be following this and hope to have a meeting with the Blue Ash people sometime in the next two weeks. And we'll encourage you to look on Nextdoor for the meeting date. And we'll be keeping people up to speed on that. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
The staff has been working on gathering the information about the pipeline extension. It's referred to as the central corridor gas pipeline. I provide information in the management's report. But this past week and then today, what is on our website is information related specifically to this particular project. So we have been able to give a synopsis of what occurred, the public meeting that had on 22nd and 23rd. And then we also linked various sites for residents to go to our website so that they can link to find out more about the proposed pipeline extension. Also, the map that was referenced by Jamie is on there along with a frequently asked questions and a brochure that has been provided to this. I would just encourage residents, as we do on the website, to express whether they want support, or they want to oppose this issue, or they want a public comment, to provide that to the Power Siding Board. Because Amberly does not have any say in this particular project, but the Power Siding Board is the next step for the decision to be made in regards to one of those routes. And that information is also on the website. So I would just encourage residents to go to our website, and all the information is contained there.
And consistent with that, we've had some discussions. Clearly, we have a role, both as public officials and the administration, to ensure that our residents are well-educated on this. And so that's an important part of it. And as Mrs. Stillpass mentioned, the Environmental Stewardship Committee will have this on the agenda, and will be looking at whether the committee wants to issue a letter or whatever. And I will bring this back up under my mayor's report for council to determine whether they wanted to do anything else.
I just wanted to add a comment regarding the information on the Power Siding Board's website, that should Amberly be part of their proposed, like the ultimately chosen route, I do believe there is a real role for local government to intervene and make comment. I mean, it would have to be at a legal level. But I think as we are doing, I think it's important for all of us to be informed as to how this is unfolding. I also attended the meeting at PRM back in March. I am not right on the route, but evidently within the distance to merit a letter. And it was indicated to me that night, they could do portions of... It's not like a hard and fast, it's this or it's this. They can combine pieces in their ultimate request to the Power Siding Board. So we need to be very proactive and clear and respond.
I just wanted to thank our speakers for coming. I know this certainly impacts some people more directly than others. I think it's helpful for all of us to hear from those who are extremely directly impacted. And just encourage everybody here who's on our website and everything. But I know we have a lot of neighbors who may not be paying attention. So please share this information with your networks also broadly from our site as well.
Councilman Warren?
I just wanted to also thank the speakers for coming in and sharing what you've learned. Certainly very important information. Mr. Larmour, although the village doesn't have a vote in this, I would assume that if council decides, we can certainly express our sentiments to the powers that be.
Certainly, anybody can submit a comment. So the Power Siding Board is seeking comments from anybody about the proposed three routes that they have identified.
Right, but in official capacity, the council could submit the letter.
Could.
Could, but in reality, it would be more effective if all 3,500 residents of the village did it.
Okay.
If there was a petition drawn up and everybody signed it in the village with that, do anything?
As I said, when we come to the mayor's report, that's all I want to talk about in the mayor's report. I want to determine whether council wants to refer this to a committee or what they want to do. So we will talk about that. We really... I mean, the policy is, other than residents that have registered to speak at council meetings, we really cannot just recognize people from the pool. But having said that, we do have one other resident, and there was an oversight with respect to this resident. She was supposed to be on the agenda. So I invite Kelly Hollitz forward as the last resident to speak. And again, just state your name and your address.
Yes. Hello, my name's Kelly Hollitz. Good evening. I live at 8560 Kentland Court. Some of you may have received an email message from me through the village's website a few months ago regarding some new signage that was placed around the village. And it was basically signage that was replacing existing signage. I do have a little bit of a personal stake in this. I'm the owner of First Star Safety, and we sell construction and traffic safety supplies. So with that in mind, I do know the marketplace and know that there are only basically three companies, if the village was to purchase any of this equipment and wanted to do so locally, there's really only three options in the tri-state region, and my firm is one of them. I know myself and several other of my outside salespersons have been to the village and to the service department and spoken with several people in an attempt to introduce ourselves and our company and our offerings and be able to be granted the opportunity to provide pricing for any of the products that the village may need. I will say, as a bit of a sidebar, when I did send my email, Mr. Larmour reached out to me right away and was able to get me in contact with some other individuals that make some purchasing decisions with the village. But I really just simply wanted to introduce myself and my organization. I did bring along, if anyone is interested, I did not seek out... Not sure how Amberly's policy is. I know a lot of other municipalities, residents can request pricing after things have been purchased to see where things lie. I did not do so, however, the products for which I saw that were already installed, I have compiled essentially a price quote, as if the village was to come to us and ask us for a price quote for these particular items. So that you could hopefully, if there's any discussion in the future, see that, hopefully, we're extremely competitive and along the same lines of what the village has already spent on the products that have been installed back in January, I believe it was. So yeah, I have those if anyone would like them. I'm happy to pass them out. There's two, or I can just leave them here. That's about all I have. If anyone has any questions for me or anything, yes.
I just wanted to clarify and comment. Pricing of purchases that the village has made, I would assume that is a public record that anybody can request, correct?
Yes, yes. And that's what I'm stating. I did not do so prior to putting my pricing together.
But I just wanted to make it clear to you that you are welcome to that information. It's not a policy of the village. It's a law that you're allowed to have.
Sure. And as I said, I realize that this is rather self-serving because I own a company that sells these products. However, at the other end of the spectrum, whether multiple bids and competitive quotes were sought after, again, like I said, the village could do so from other companies outside of the area or from websites or things like that. But it would make quite a bit of sense, I would think, to shop locally. My office is in Lockland, and I know the company where they were purchased claim is in Sharonville, which, again, local, I understand. But just wanted to bring all of this to anyone's attention because hopefully we can be of some help and save the village and its taxpayers money in the end because we find ourselves to be extremely competitive. So thank you for the opportunity. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to committee reports. And the first committee is the Finance Committee. And in Councilman Hattenbach's absence, I will make the report for the Finance Committee. Before you tonight is Resolution 2016-15. What this resolution will do is it would give the authority to the village manager to make a request for an advance of property tax monies. This really came up this year because there was some system issues at the county auditor's office, and monies that we were expecting to receive in April did not come in. And so an inquiry was made, and we were told that they were having system issues. But it is a standard practice that you can put in place a resolution that would give the authority to the village manager to request the monies early. As residents, we all know, in the case of the monies that we receive in April, we all pay those to the county auditor at the end of January. So they've already had the money for a couple of months. So it is probably good practice to get the authority to the village manager to give him the authority to get our money as soon as possible. So in the case that was confronted with us in April, the county auditor agreed to advance us the money without the resolution because they realized it was their problem. But I am hereby requesting that we approve Resolution 2016-15, which would give the village manager this authority in the future. So I move that we approve Resolution 2016-15.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2016-15, giving the village manager the authority to request advanced payment of taxes. Are there any questions or comments?
I just wanted to add the comment from the Finance Committee discussion. As is probably evident from the Finance Report, it's not that we don't have enough money to meet our obligations, they're just not in the right funds. Given the limits of municipal financing and accounting, it would be very challenging and time-consuming to move the different funds around to cover the payrolls and things that were anticipated being covered by the payments that we normally receive in April.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-15. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously. We will now move on to the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee.
Before council is Resolution 2016-16, a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for the 2016 street rehabilitation program. The 2016 street rehabilitation program initially consisted of the repaving of Arachoma Drive, Arachoma Drive East, and West Arachoma and Arachoma Forest. Repaving of these streets was going to be in conjunction with the Cincinnati Waterworks following their water main project. Repaving of the Arachoma neighborhood streets has been delayed until 2017 due to delay in the Cincinnati Waterworks project. With the delay in the Arachoma paving and the possibility of missing the 2016 paving season, staff began evaluating other streets to determine which street should be moved forward on the repaving list to be part of the 2016 program. The 2016 program will consist of repairing and replacing curbs and gutters, stormwater catch basin repairs, and repaving of the entire streets as follows. Paving, Spring Valley Drive, curbing and stormwater catch basin repairs, milling and paving of the entire street. Kincaid Road, Section Road to North Farm Crest Drive, asphalt base repairs, milling and paving of the entire street. Patricel Court, curbing and catch basin repairs, milling and paving of the entire street. Kentland Court, curbing and stormwater catch basin repairs, milling and paving of the entire street. Curbing, Long Meadow Lane, curb replacement from Ridge Road to Lamarck Drive, curb repairs from Lamarck Drive to Spring Valley Drive. Arbor Crest Drive, curb repairs from Lamarck Drive north to the terminus. Village Council authorized the assembly of a bid package including paving and curb repairs. These projects were packaged and advertised as a bundle for competitive bidding, and bids were opened April 29. The bid resulted in very favorable pricing with two bids received. The lowest and best bid was submitted by Barrett Paving Materials in the amount of $614,288.55, including the three alternatives, which included Patricel Court, Kentland Court, and Arbor Crest Drive. Their bid was $27,717.36 less than the engineer's estimate, and $84,302.72 less than the second With the street program of $614,288.55, the municipal fund will pay $95,000 towards the paving of Kincaid Road. Approximately $364,594.25 will be charged to the Streets Fund, and approximately $154,694.30 will be charged to the Stormwater Fund based on the portion of the program related to the stormwater versus street work. While the bid strategy was successful at gaining very attractive pricing for the street improvement, the village was diligent in our inspection and contract administration to protect the village. Therefore, Resolution 2016 authorizes the award of the bid to Barrett Paving in the amount of $614,288.55, including the three alternatives.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-16, authorizing the village manager to enter into the contract for the 2016 street program. Are there any questions or comments?
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Bardak for chairing the last Streets Committee in my absence and doing a great job presenting the proposal. One comment. The amount that is being charged to the Streets Fund is consistent with what we have been doing over the last few years. So the amount that we're budgeting to this really doesn't represent something new that we didn't allocate earlier.
Other questions or comments? I mean, the only other comment I would make is, as Councilman Bardak mentioned, $95,000 is coming from outside the village. And again, this is a case of our village administration being very successful and diligent at applying for grants to the extent they're available. And in this case, we were able to get a $95,000 grant to pay for part of the program. So again, kudos to the administration. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-16. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution 2016-17 authorizes the village manager to enter into a contract with municipal and contractor sealing products to perform stormwater sewer lining at 3305 Lamarck Drive. Stormwater pipe located in the rear yard of 3305 Lamarck Drive within the village stormwater easement was originally part of the 2016 stormwater easement was originally part of the 2015 stormwater program. 2015 program received just two bids, and both were rejected due to inconsistencies in the amount of the bids and lack of contractor experience in similar projects. Staff and the village engineer met and reviewed the project with three local contractors to determine the best and most efficient process for repairing the stormwater sewer. Institute form, a company that has installed cured in-place stormwater lining on past projects for the village and had pulled their bid from the project in 2015 stated that due to the confinement of the area, size, and amount of equipment they would need, it would not be cost-efficient, and did not provide a quote for this project. The form explained they would need to remove trees, sections of the fence, and most likely damage the driveway in the process. Municipal and Contractor Sealing Products and Euretech Holdings have similar products and methods of sealing the joints and cracks throughout the pipe, catch basins, and manholes. Both companies would have smaller and less equipment, would not require removing any trees, and would be the least disruptive to the resident's property. Both companies would install reinforced concrete liner to seal all joints and cracks. The procedure both companies offer would be to clean the interior surface of the 42-inch concrete pipe and apply urethane route to fill the larger voids in and around the joints as needed. Once the process is completed, they will put a small machine that would spray a high-straight proprietary blend of mortars, resins, and additives that would protect the concrete from deterioration and improve structural integrity and provide better durability and longevity over replacement. With an engineer's estimate of $46,000, two quotes were received from the contractors. CT Consultants reviewed the following quotes and found them to be in order. The engineer's estimate was $46,000. Municipal and Contractor Sealing Products estimate was $43,750. Euretech Holdings came in at $49,150. Either contractor is more than able to complete the project to meet the village's satisfaction. CT Consultants and staff recommends the project be awarded to Municipal and Contractor Sealing Products for their proposal of $43,750.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-17, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with Municipal and Contractor Sealing Products to perform the stormwater work on Lamarck Drive. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimous.
Resolution 2016-18 is a proclamation for May, the week of May 15 through the 21st as National Public Works Weeks. National Public Works Week, the purpose is to promote public awareness and to show appreciation to the Amberly Village staff involved with maintenance department operations. The American Public Works Association sets aside a week in May each year to celebrate those services provided by the maintenance departments throughout the country. The theme for this year's event is Always There. The Amberly Village Maintenance Department is on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week for both maintenance department and fire department-related duties. The department is responsible for a variety of tasks critical to the safety and the quality of life enjoyed by Amberly Village residents. Some of the services provided by the maintenance department include street and right-of-way repairs and maintenance, storm sewer pipe and catch basin restoration and repairs, snow and ice removal, brush clipping, leaf picking up, tree removal, litter control, maintaining guardrails and traffic signs, buildings and village-owned properties, vehicle maintenance, including fire department apparatus. In addition, our employees responded to flooded streets, storm damage such as trees and tree limbs blown down in the right-of-way, while functioning traffic signals and damaged street signs. They also removed trash and other debris from the village streets to ensure a clean and safe community for residents and businesses. All seven employees are fully certified firefighters for the village. This makes the entire maintenance department trained as firefighters. So, therefore, we're seeking a resolution 2016-18 proclaiming May 15 through 21 as National Public Works Week.
Second.
You were making the motion, that was the motion?
That's the motion.
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-18 proclaiming May 15 to 21 as National Public Works Week in Amberly Village. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimous. And I assume that concludes the...
That does conclude the report.
Okay. We will now move on to the Public Buildings and Parks Committee.
Okay. You have in your packet ordinance 2016-10, regulating model aircraft on public property. This issue, sort of colloquially known as drones, was referred to the committee as a public safety matter in response to resident concerns about these devices being flown overhead at Amberly Green. The committee has met twice on this matter. First, on March 28, staff presented research indicating that Cincinnati and Hamilton County have banned the use of these items in their parks and along with the national parks. And we learned that Blue Ash is in the process of developing a policy for drone use at their new Summit Park. And it was particularly noted that in Amberly, the flying of drones on this particular property, in addition to the Amberly Green, but here, is particularly problematic because of the 911 system and the radio tower. At the second meeting on April 25, the committee reviewed a draft ordinance banning, you know, this use on public property in the village, and the ordinance had been prepared by our law director. We had a wide-ranging discussion that illustrated the complexities and ambiguities of drones, the matter of drones in general. There can be recreational or commercial or public safety uses, there can be privacy as well as safety concerns, there are questions about jurisdiction because the Federal Aviation Administration is in the process of developing regulations about drone flights. Given all these considerations and recognizing the specific role of the Public Buildings and Parks Committee, the ordinance before you prohibits the operation of model aircraft on public property in Amberly Village, that stops there, which encompasses the municipal building grounds, Amberly Green, and the north side. And the term "model aircraft" is used in the ordinance primarily to denote the recreational uses of lighter-weight vehicles flying at levels below 400 feet, which, above which is regulated by the FAA. So, I'm presenting this ordinance for a first reading tonight. My hope is that we could waive the third reading next month and vote on it, which is June, and then it could be effective for the summer months when this may become more of an issue. So, just...
Okay, that was the first reading of this particular ordinance. Are there any questions or comments? It will be on the agenda next month for the next reading, and as Councilwoman Comley said, there may be a motion to waive the third reading at the next meeting.
Should the village consider regulating drones over private property? Should we be considering moving beyond just public property? For the reasons, I mean, basically almost for the same reasons you shared.
Perhaps in a different committee, but there are a lot of ambiguities right now because of the FAA having not yet fully weighed in on regulating commercial use. And we could surely regulate, we could develop something around, like, our own agency using them. But other than that, I think we might be stepping into a gray area that would be more trouble than it's worth. But that's, that's really just my personal opinion, that's not a... I mean, Kevin, do you? Kevin, anybody?
There was some discussion at the last committee meeting, and it was, I think it was recognized as an important thing to keep considering, but the Public Buildings, Public Lands Committee wasn't the place for it. That maybe it should be at the Land, excuse me, Law Committee, or I think you had another suggestion too. But it's something that should be discussed, just it wasn't part of the proposal being discussed by the committee.
And this was responding to a very specific complaints and a very specific issue in our part. Okay, any other questions or comments?
That concludes my report of the Public Buildings and Parks Committee.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Police and Fire Committee.
Okay, the first item is Resolution 2016-19, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase equipment for police cruisers. Back in January, council approved the replacement of two cruisers. Delivery is anticipated later this month, so it is necessary to equip them as cruisers, which normally involves removing certain equipment from the old vehicle and reinstalling it in the new. However, the cruisers being replaced this year are from the 2010 Chargers, which were purchased, used in 2012, and their equipment is not compatible with the SUVs that the department is now using. So, some replacement items that will be needed are the partition that protects officers when prisoners are placed in custody, the prisoner transport seats that secure them in the rear of the cruiser and reduce the ability to hide weapons or contraband in the backseat, additional lights in the rear for visibility when the trunk is up, and the light bars on the roof. Camp Safety is the vendor for servicing the cruisers, and they have been competitive in pricing. When the new vehicles arrive from Ford, they will be delivered to Camp Safety for conversion to cruisers. The quote for equipment to be installed on both vehicles is not to exceed $17,864. Additionally, both new cruisers will be taken to Sign Tech to have reflective graphics applied to match the other cruisers in the fleet for a cost of $2,334. The Police and Fire Committee met on April 25 to review these expenditures and recommends their approval by council. So, I move that we adopt Resolution 2016-19, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase equipment for police cruisers. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-19, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase equipment for police cruisers. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-19. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimous.
Okay, the next item is a very celebratory week here in the village. The second item is Resolution 2016-20, proclaiming the week of May 15 to 21, 2016, as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and May 15, 2016, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. The purpose of this resolution is to generate public attention and show appreciation to employees of the Amberly Police Department. In 1962, this originates from 1962 when President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated these days, the May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which this date falls as Police Week. During this week, all Amberly Village police officers will wear a black band across their badges in memory of all the law enforcement officers who have given their lives in the line of duty. This symbolic gesture deeply affects all police officers because they know that every year, an average of 145 American police officers are killed in the line of duty in the United States, and over 58,000 officers are assaulted in the performance of their duties. Tomorrow, which is Tuesday, May 10, a local ceremony with Amberly Police participation will take place at Fountain Square in downtown Cincinnati, beginning at 11:00 a.m. A parade will follow to the Hamilton County Police Memorial located at Cincinnati Police District One Headquarters on Ezra Charles Drive. I have attended this several times, and it is really a very lovely and meaningful event. You can just do one half or the other, depending on your schedule, or both. So, all residents are welcome and encouraged to attend. During Police Week, an Amberly Village police officer will travel to Washington, D.C. to participate in the national events with police from all over the country. The Police Fire Committee met on April 25 and recommends the passage of this resolution, 2016-20, proclaiming this week as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and the 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. So moved.
Second.
Wake up, everybody.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-20, proclaiming the week of May 15, 21, as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and May 15, 2016, as Peace Officer Memorial Day here in Amberly Village. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-20. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimous.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We will now move on to the Land Development Committee, and I am the Chair of the Land Development Committee, so I will be presenting the report. As council knows, at our April meeting, we considered a contract related to the possible development of Amberly Green, and council decided that it did not want to move forward on that particular proposal at that point. In the meantime, the village manager and I met with Mr. Mark Fisher from the Jewish Community Center, and the Jewish Community Center has been expressing an interest with us, of working with us to look at options for expanding their presence on Amberly Green. And so, Mr. Fisher submitted a letter to Mr. Larmour and myself, and that letter was presented at the Land Development Committee meeting last week. And what is before you today is Resolution 2016-21, which would basically say that we, as the village, think it's a good idea that we work with the Jewish Community Center to develop these options. The Jewish Community Center is asking for between 90 and 120 days for them to work up the options of what they would propose to put on the property, and they are going to be doing that at their cost. And during this 90 to 120-day period, we clearly will be working with the Jewish Community Center and giving them access to our reports that we have on the property. But I really believe this is a win-win for both organizations. The Jewish Community Center is clearly a very important resident to the village and one that we want to work at. It is a resident of the village that provides services both to its members, and in this particular case, the Jewish Community Center wants to look at options to provide, possibility of things for the wider residents of Amberly Village. So, this, to me, is a great opportunity to really sit back and take a break and look at what could be done with this property that I think would be very exciting for our residents, and as I said, also important for an important resident of the village in the Jewish Community Center. So, I hereby move that we adopt Resolution 2016-21, authorizing the Jewish Community Center to consider prospective development on Amberly Green for this 90 to 120-day period. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-21, authorizing the Jewish Community Center to consider prospective development on Amberly Green. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you. I agree with everything you said, and thank you very much. I think, two quick things. One is, you know, I don't necessarily even see it as a pause or a step back, it's really very much a step forward. I think the JCC has been part of the discussion for a long time, and I think many, many folks in the village feel that this is something that we thought would be part of this at every step. It's really, it's great, it's great news. I did want to mention, though, we talked about in Land Development also, that during that period, there will be updates from the J and from Land Development will hopefully meet again during that period. I just wanted to mention that because obviously continuing community input engagement, you know, information is paramount in this, in this particular process. So, we will assume the meeting again, yeah.
Are there other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-21. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimous. We will now move on to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee.
Thank you. The Health, Education, and Welfare Committee met twice since our last council meeting. On April 11, the committee met to discuss the ongoing issue of pedestrian safety. Amberly being an older suburb that was built without sidewalks and with minimal road shoulder in order to foster a rural atmosphere, but as time has passed, highways have been constructed, and newer suburbs to the north and east of us have been built, our roads have become less safe for any other sort of travel besides by car. On the other hand, our citizens, as well as citizens all over the country, have become more active and require the use of our roadways for walking and cycling. Amberly also is home to a significant Jewish population, which travels exclusively by foot on Friday nights and Saturdays in order to access neighborhood synagogues and in general to enjoy a walk on Shabbat. With all of this in mind, the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee has devoted a significant amount of time over the course of the last year and a half to focus on making Amberly amount of time over the course of the last year and a half to focus on making Amberly Village a safer place for pedestrians. So in our most recent meeting on, well, not the most, most recent, but our meeting on the 11th, we met to discuss the experiment of installing temporary road humps, street safety humps in the neighborhood streets, and to see how those were going, and it was determined that a better assessment could be had by, instead of having two safety humps on, speed humps on two separate streets, but by moving both of them to the same street at approximately 200 to 300-foot intervals. So, we're going to try that. Also, speed sign data, you may have seen the speed signs posted at different streets. I think we began last spring, and we collected data all through the summer. We moved the signs, and what we were doing was recording our residents' speeds, not for ticketing purposes, but for informational purposes. So we analyzed that data, and then finally, we are looking into, in particular, the west side sidewalk installation possibly from Section Road 2, 70, 85 El Brook. We're looking at costs and whether it's even feasible, given the status of the Gibson property right now. And we will also be reviewing suggestions for a resolution to try to put all of our efforts in writing for future safety measures. Today, the committee met to discuss our favorite subject, the deer. We have a deer policy in Amberly Village that was enacted, I believe, in 2012, and as part of that policy, we have an infrared deer count every three years. So the first one was in 2013, and the second one was this year. And what that does, it's an aerial flyover that actually does a count of individual deer using infrared technology. So in 2013, the total number of deer, both inside the lines of the village and immediately outside in a buffer zone, was 239 deer on one particular day at one particular time. And then three years later, that same, the number was 248. So it's going up, but just a little over three years. What the committee decided to do is to continue our current program of culling up to 50 deer a year before additional permission by council is needed. And we will also, at the suggestion of some of our residents, we are going to explore what other neighboring communities are doing with regard to allowing residents or not allowing residents to feed the deer, and we are encouraging our residents not to feed the deer and not to feed wildlife in their yards. But it's not a law in Amberly as yet, and we are exploring whether or not to make it so. And we are aware of the experimental program being done in Clifton, and we are following that very closely. And the last thing we were going to explore was the viability of oral contraceptives of the deer. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Are there questions for the vice?
What's the program in Clifton?
Oh, and, well, Clifton this year has received a grant as well as significant donations from interested residents that, and they engaged in a sterilization program. I forget then, was it 30 deer at $1,000 apiece? And a residence garage was set up as the operating theater for the procedure. And so, this, we are not allowed to do this in the state. We can't just go and catch the deer and sterilize the deer, but this is being done as an experimental program through ODNR, and everybody is following it to see how it works.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. We will now move on to the managers' report.
I wanted to highlight a couple of items from the managers' report. Regards to always looking at ways to decrease our expenses, the village will be selling a total of four vehicles this upcoming month. It does not require council authorization, but it was discussed in the Police and Fire Committee, so I just wanted to make council aware of that, that we are disposing of four vehicles in our police fleet. The Ice Cream Social date has been set, and I want to announce that to residents. It's been set for Sunday, August 7th, so it'll be held here at the municipal building. So August 7th, the annual Ice Cream Social. And there's been press and some questions raised about the former Gibson Building, so I wanted to mention what is occurring there. The Hamilton County Port Authority began embarking on their strategic plan this past fall, and their plan is to acquire property for manufacturing. They announced their intentions to do this, and then came across a property in Amberly Village, known to most of us as the Gibson Greeting Card Building. And so, they entered into a purchase agreement in the fall and anticipate that they'll be able to close on that particular property purchase in June of this year. And the port's plan is to acquire the property and then work with the Regional Economic Development Initiative, as well as the Village of Amberly, to market the site and land a business on that particular site. But that will also entail, most likely, raising the entire building. So from a positive standpoint, that means that there will likely be a tenant on that building in the future, a larger tenant at that, since it is approximately 54 acres. The downside of it is, we will go a few years without any kind of revenue off of that property, albeit property tax, and most importantly, earnings tax, that we will not receive off of that property. But it is good news that the Port Authority has stepped in, and we will work with them, as well as with the Regional Economic Development Initiative Cincinnati, to land a tenant on that site. That's good news. I've been made aware that we have received, residents are complaining, registering concerns about the postal service here in the village. I just wanted to mention that because the residents have inquired about an outlet in order to register some of their concerns. I have been contacted by the postal service, and they have given me an email address for residents to register any concerns they have about mail delivery, whether you're getting your mail or not getting it on time, or if you believe something is missing, those types of things. That will be posted on our website, and we'll also post that on Nextdoor. I'll list that right now. The email address that residents can communicate with at this point would be manager.45212@uspsgov. So that's manager.45212@uspsgov. I think you're aware the Norwood Ranch delivery area covers most of the areas of the village, 45237 and a couple of other zip codes in the area. I have found that some of the complaints that I have received, when I've been dealing with the postal service, they've been very responsive to me, trying to identify what the issue is. So I'd encourage residents to communicate with the postal service about any concerns that they might have on mail delivery. And that concludes the items I wanted to mention.
Are there any questions?
This is unrelated, really, to anything you just said, but Nextdoor, there's been a series of comments on Nextdoor about the utility boxes that have been added on Farmcrest. Is that something we had any knowledge of being done, or any opportunity for comment? The comments were there unsightly and different colors and in the way, or whatever. I was just curious if that was something that ever even came across your desk or happened outside of our awareness.
Yes, this has probably been a few months ago, and we frequently get requests from Duke or other utility companies to do work in the right way, and we're obligated to give them permission to work in the right way, and in this situation, we did. They did identify that in the North Farmcrest area, they were going to be upgrading their electric capability in that area, and they were going to be installing what I refer to as the green transmission boxes. It was my understanding that they would be working with the individual homeowners on this, but the electric there is underground, so these boxes that they are installing are necessary in order for them to upgrade their system in that area. From a village standpoint, you know that we have the Farmcrest subdivision on our radar screen for an entire street redo. We had applied for a grant this past year. We were not successful on it, but we plan on applying again this next year. And one of the items that Duke had mentioned is they were going to be doing some boring underneath the roadway and probably under some driveways. So we certainly saw that as being a positive, getting it done in advance before we secure funds to go in and totally redo the streets. But Duke is certainly within their purview to go in and to do this work, and it certainly is probably going to be an upgrade. It may not look like it from a resident's standpoint, but it probably is an upgrade because those typically, those green boxes are visible in most communities where you have that underground electric.
Any other questions for the manager? Now, we'll move on to the chief's report. Lieutenant Bloom?
Yes, I just have a couple of things I'd like to mention. The officer that's going to be going to Washington, D.C. for the National Law Enforcement Memorial Week will be Sergeant Mike Kanek. He's going to be representing Amberly Village and the Hamilton County Police Association Honor Garden. He will be performing there in Washington during that week. Along the lines with the Police Department, Officer Alt responded up to Pennsylvania to Shallow Creek Kennels and picked up our K-9 on April 29th, and he started training with her on May the 2nd. He is a 14-month-old, 70-pound male. He's a mix of a German Shepherd and a Belgian Malinois. And we anticipate his training to go through August, beginning of August. We anticipate he'll be graduating August 8th with the OPADA certification, which is the Ohio Police Officer Training Academy certification for Officer Alt and our new K-9. So hopefully by mid-August, we'll have him available and at some events, and I'm sure that he'll be able to make an appearance at the Ice Cream Social for sure. So that's it for the K-9. And then, as far as the Fire Department goes, I'd like to commend our grant writer Sandy Pywin and Officer Chris Frich. They received a grant from the State of Ohio for $10,800 for, it's a training grant for fire officers. The significance of that is, is not every community or agency was able to get one, and as a matter of fact, in the state of Ohio, that grant was $2,100 more than any other community in the state of Ohio receives. So we're going to be able to apply that to some additional training for our fire officers. So that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for Lieutenant Bloom?
I just wanted to thank you. I attended the Chumets Burn this year, and I wanted to just thank the department for their incredible work and the unique opportunity that that is, and just please convey that to your team. That was really, really great.
Thank you, I will.
Any other questions?
Does the dog have a name?
It does. Creed. Creed. That was Officer Alt's voice. Okay, we will now move on to the mayor's report, and first, as the council rep on the Environmental Stewardship Committee, I just wanted to give a report from that committee. As most residents know, we held our, I think it's our fourth annual one-stop drop on April 10th. We recycled 33 tons, which was more than 10 tons more than we recycled last year. It was, there were definitely some issues with traffic as residents probably in the area, and it's something that the Environmental Stewardship Committee is going to meet to discuss as to whether there's something we can do to improve on that situation. But we recycled 16 tons of electronics, 14 tons of paper, 2 tons of textiles, and a new item this year, which was not just recycling, it was reuse. A local nonprofit called Scrap Natty accumulated some just odds and ends for use in art projects, and they, in doing so, they gathered over 500 pounds of that. This is all part of Amberly's focus on recycling. In 2015, Amberly recycled 465 tons, which meant that we are now up to 26% of our waste is now recycled, and I think that's the high watermark that we've achieved, 26. I think we had gotten to 25, and then I think we stepped back to 24, but we're now up to 26. So with that, as we increase our recycling, it does benefit us financially because we do get money back from Hamilton County, and in the case of 2015, we received $15,000 back. And the higher recycling rates we have, the more money we get. On April 25th, the Environmental Stewardship Committee celebrated Arbor Day. We also celebrated on that day, that is our 12th, this is our 12th consecutive year of being designated a Tree City USA community, so we celebrated that. During that evening, we viewed a film titled Trees in Trouble, and this film was put together locally, and it very much focused on the challenges facing our trees like Emerald Ash Bor. And it very much focused, it also went back and kind of identified what was done more than 50 years ago to really start to develop our tree KMP in the greater Cincinnati area, and focused on what some local governments and residents did to really start to plant trees, and basically what it's saying is, it's time to probably do it again. This was an excellent film, and I think it's something we will look to possibly repeat because I think it is, you know, a very informational and good film. Also, on that day, we read a proclamation, and we also discussed the 46th year of Earth Day, and kind of discussed what that Earth Day has been through the years. And finally, we did plant a tree down in the area along the walking track where we have lost a number of trees over the past few years. And finally, with respect to the Environmental Stewardship Committee, the next meeting will be May 23rd at 7:00. With respect to the mayor's report, before we get back to the gas pipeline, I just want to again stress that on June 2nd, we will be having two public meetings, which we've tried to do over the last, I think we held two of these about two years ago, and these are meant to just give updates to the residents on important matters. So we will be discussing finances, we will be discussing, you know, kind of what's been going on in the Police Department. These are public sessions that will be held at the Jewish Community Center. There will be one at 1:00 and one at 7:00 on June 2nd, and we encourage residents to attend. It's a great opportunity to hear about what's going on and possibly ask questions or whatever. And then, as I said, on the gas pipeline, I'm interested in what council would like to do with respect to this. Definitely, the Environmental Stewardship Committee will be meeting, as I said, on May 23rd, and that will be on our agenda to discuss, you know, whether we want to issue a letter as the committee, what that letter looks like, or whatever. And I didn't know whether the council wanted to refer this to one of its committees, whether it wants to wait and see what the Environmental Stewardship Committee comes out with as far as a possible letter. I mean, it could be that, you know, we come up with a letter and make that available to residents as a form of a letter that they could send in or whatever. So I'm interested in what you want to do at this point.
Well, I think there's a lot of things that we can do that, and I think that's an excellent idea to develop a letter that our residents can use because sometimes they just don't have, people don't have the words or don't know what to say, so they avoid. But I think it would be helpful if each of us could individually, but use, but could individually weigh in and send an email or write a letter, but sign it with our council designation. And I'm not sure, can we... And I'm not sure, can we pass a res, we could pass a resolution, certainly, it would seem, because to have, even if we discounted the environmental aspect of any of it, if we just said it's going to be construction going straight through the middle of our village, I don't think that even, that traffic can bear that for the length of time that it would take to construct such, such a thing. And to turn left out of my neighborhood to get to a council meeting is, you know, I'm, I sometimes feel like I need to call the police to direct me out to make a left turn. It's just Ridge Road is a disaster and, and to use that as an artery for, for a natural gas pipeline seems to me, you know, what was wrong with all of the other options? 197 options that they came down to us, but my opinion.
I, I think while I agree that there are certainly many things we can do, I like the letter idea. I do think having the, I think the, my understanding of the Environmental Stewardship Committee is there's going to really be a lot of information provided, both for our benefit and for the residents' benefit. So I think utilizing that as a resource as a starting point and, and in the meantime, you know, us all writing letters and going down that path is good. I mean, I think the Environmental Stewardship is, Committee is, is well-prepared to give us better advice and, and kind of a better, much more informed place to kind of go from there. And then we can, we can certainly come back at our next meeting and, although, is that, is our next meeting too late? Do we think, no? So we have the opportunity at our next meeting to, to take some action. But I recommend that we have that meeting and also potentially whatever the community meetings are, that are being planned, that I think Mary mentioned, that are being planned for the multiple communities to learn more about this.
I was just wondering, from just a logistics standpoint, so in drafting a resolution, you would need to get the solicitor engaged in preparing that, right? And that's something that the Environmental Stewardship Committee typically does not have access to?
No. Well, the Environmental Stewardship Committee is not a committee of council. So in fact, if, if we want to do a resolution in council, I think I would recommend that we refer the item to a committee to consider that.
Right.
And, and, you know, maybe that's something we can do. Maybe the committee will determine, you know, if we refer it to a committee, they could work it following the May 23rd meeting and determine whether council should do something.
So I just want to make sure I understand. You're suggesting that possibly following the May 23rd meeting, a committee of council would take up the issue to kind of pull thoughts together as a council resolution for the June meeting?
We could, yeah, we could refer it to a council, a committee this evening, and then the particular committee could meet after May 23rd, after they have that information, and consider whether it made sense for council to a resolution or what.
I think that makes sense. I think it makes sense definitely to wait till after May 23rd. Like, we, I, I would not favor council inventing its own process to put together. We might as well tap into what's already happening, otherwise it becomes a kind of a duplicate of effort.
Any other comments?
So this is just, it would be, following this May 23rd meeting, the information would be moved to the H E W committee? Is that right?
There is not a committee that I would say fits perfectly, but if, if council is amenable to referring it to the H E W committee, that's fine with me.
Well, I would like to request that if that happens, that somebody from the, who's at the May 23rd meeting be available at the committee meeting or at least make available the points that would, they would want or that we would want to see in a resolution, so we're not starting from a blank.
I will make that commitment that I will be available.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Environmental Stewardship.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we now move on to new business. Okay, any, any council member have any new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.